All right, welcome everyone to the Rachel Equity and Policing Commission meeting. This is a September eighth, twenty twenty-two. And this meeting will be hybrid level one, which means the Commission meeting will be at a physical location at the City and County Building. And members of the public may provide public comment in person. Commissioners and presenters may join or participate in person or through electronic meetings. First, we'll just have a real quick roll call so that we know who is on the call and we can make sure to add into the minutes. Mona Luabiha Fokka, Mayor's Office.
We are in Mayor's Office.
Steven Johnson, R U P Commission.
Those online?
Jason Oldroyd with the City Attorney's Office.
Thank you, Jason.
Steve Andrew Warden on the Commission.
Lieutenant Andrew Clough with Salt Lake City Police Department.
Verona Malga, R U P Commission.
All right, thank you all for participating and joining us via Zoom as well as in person. Oh, and Michelle, our Equity Liaison, when the Mayor's Office has just joined us. All right, so we are going to, if anybody has any open dialogue that they would want to participate this evening. The Commission? All right.
Are we just, how many people are online?
Yeah, there are one, two, three, there's three online. And then we have Lieutenant Clough and our Attorney's Office.
So we don't even have a quorum?
No, not a quorum, but we can record and then we won't hold on anything today.
Okay.
And just want to note that there isn't anyone here for public comment.
We're breathing right through, we're on level four now.
Oh, we're gonna cruise. And then with four, since we don't have quorum today, we will approve in a dot minutes at the next meeting. All right, I will give the time to Lieutenant Clough to give a quick update from the Chief's Office.
Yeah, I can do that. So real quick, we had a presentation by legal equity advocates. They came in for diversity, equity, and inclusion training that we're trying to do at the Police Department. I feel like they gave a great presentation. Mona, you were there and maybe you can provide some input as well. A brief overview of their presentation. They're looking at providing the history of law enforcement, issues that community has reported in dealing with law enforcement, the value of diversity and our understanding within law enforcement of different cultures within the communities and how to engage with those communities, as well as an education on bias, implicit bias, and how to recognize and to overcome those biases in law enforcement. I feel like it was a really good presentation. It was given by Monaji Tossinga and her husband Izzy Tossinga, who used to be a former officer at Salt Lake City. So he brings a really good perspective from the officers as well as from his work with equity and inclusion with communities and the NHPI community in particular. So I feel like that went really well. We do have two more presentations that are coming up on September twenty-sixth. One will be from True Empowering, which is Dr. Tyrone Bates. And then the other will be from Equality Utah. Olivia Armio is coming in to present then as well. So we should be sending out those invitations. If you haven't already got those, you're more than welcome to come into the presentation at the Public Safety Building and provide any input. We may be looking at kind of a modified collaboration between the three that are wanting to do a presentation to Salt Lake City, just because they bring such a different perspective. One from police perspective, one from educational background, Dr. Bates, and then the other from Equality Utah and our L G T Q plus community. So it might be great to have a good collaboration between those three to provide more information on diversity, equity, and inclusion for our police officers. But that's all for that. Are there any questions about that? Or do you want me to move on to the recruiter, Mona?
No, and I will just add to that is when we do have all three, we had Reverend Davis part of that discussion and Tanya. So they were the two that volunteered as well as Commissioner, one other Commissioner now, I'm not thinking. And she was able to attend, so it was darned, that was who it was. And so those two were there in the meeting for that presentation. I also have their presentation, but I don't want to share it out until all three have presented. So once that happens, then I'll share with their group. Just want to, if they have like intellectual property part of that presentation, be respectful of that. But that was a great overview, Lieutenant Clough.
Fantastic. I do know that you have had questions about the police recruiter that's being hired. So it is a part of the Salt Lake City, the city H R group is hiring this person to be responsible solely for recruiting for the police office. So even though she's going to be doing recruiting for us, really, she's a city entity with the H R team in the City and County Building. They have made an offer. They'd finished second interviews on Monday. I believe the offer was accepted, but she hasn't started yet. I think it's Alana Lamb. May have accepted the offer, I haven't confirmed that yet. So just so you're aware, City H R is still working on that. But hopefully here in the near future, we'll be able to provide more updates on the City P D recruiter. And then another update on our restarting the CAG committees and meetings with the outreach in the community. So we have restarted the Latino Coalition Meetings. I think they've met twice so far. We're still working with the NHPI community and Refugee Community, having a little bit of a slow response from them, but we're still trying to get that up and working. Dorothy Rose Hadlock is working on that right now. So any questions about that at all? I think that's about all I had.
Thank you, Lieutenant Clough.
You're very welcome.
No.
Those, thank you Lieutenant Clough, those were three things that were in phase one. So especially with hiring the full-time recruiter and the selection of the diversity trainers, those are really two high priority things that were on the phase one. So excited on the movement on that and we'll be touching base as well as to let the rest of the Commission know. I attend all of the presentation meetings and I'll have notes from them.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Lieutenant Clough. All right, we are just going to move around our agenda a little bit. We'll have the five-year priority discussion first and then the Attorney's Office will join in like a little bit after six. You know, Jason's already here, he's booked out the evening. So we'll first start with our five-year priority and then move on from there. The reason why we're having this discussion now, after I gave the presentation last week, recognizing that some of the priorities or some of the phase one and would need to happen over the course of the next five years, some of the pieces to it. So it would also be helpful to us in the city as well as we're working with S L C P D and internal departments to have a better understanding of what the priorities are for the Commission for the next five years. And then we can focus on that year by year, as well as like we can adjust, of course, but I think kind of giving a plan and moving forward. I shared this with a few of you, but I forgot to share with all last, last meeting. But I will be ending, working with the city at the end of this year. So I want to be able to lay out a foundation that the Mayor can carry out in the City Council and carry out with Rachel Equity and Policing. And I'm trying to implement or provide in the annual report all of the learnings that I've had working with you all over the course of this last year and a half. So if you get a lot of emails from me or texts or calls, it's because I'm trying to condense all of this information and make sure I capture all the things that we've discussed over the last year or so. So I am going to just start with this presentation and we'll jump right in. Will we just share it?
Hey, Moana?
Yes.
I just want to tell you, I just want to tell you that I'm sorry to hear that you're leaving. And there's still time, but I just want to tell you, thanks for your work and thanks for your prioritization to put us in the best possible position before you go. So thank you for your dedication.
Thank you. And of course, Maria and Michelle will be here along the way and we will be passing the time. So hopefully all the institutional knowledge that I have, I can pass on to the next group and they'll be able to take over. All right. Okay, so I do want to jump into it since we have Steve, both Steves on the line. And we have Verona as well to give us a better understanding of the next five months. So what I did was I reread the ordinance that was passed by the Commission by the City Council for what is required of this Commission. And then I went through the phase one and phase two reports. And I was trying to organize them in a way that we could view it and put them in some kind of timeline, right? And I think this discussion will be, will spill out a little over into the next couple of weeks. But I at least want to start it while everyone is here. And if you all are okay, I'll probably, not probably, I'll be reaching out personally to anybody who has more information or more suggestions that they would like, but can't think of it right here and right now. Additionally, the Mayor will be here in November. And I think this will be a great time to just not share the whole annual report with her because we'll still have to have that reviewed by the R U P and it will be given to her in December. But I think this five-year priority discussion so that she can see what direction the Rachel Equity and Policing Commission wants to go. So, you have any questions?
No.
After doing a survey of that, this is the two things that really stuck out for me was, I think that the Commission's job is twofold. It's internal, which is providing recommendations to Salt Lake City Police Department for their policies, culture, and budget, which phase two, phase one was all of those things. And then the second thing is the out-facing or external piece, which is community engagement and providing recommendations to the Mayor and City Council on methods to engage with community. So I know that you all have already been doing it, but I want to make sure that when we have the five-year priorities discussion, that that's what we're really holding in on, those two main things that have been tasked per the ordinance. All right, so some of the, this is just the language from the, from the actual ordinance. But I wanted to focus on a couple of things that we could look at in this next, next five years and even just saying like, where do you want to do this in the next couple of years? So we have right here, I think this is part of the biggest piece right here is to receive, engage and interact with the public to receive community input. And anybody raise your hand or tell me to be quiet at any point in time. But I want to offer up some examples of ways that we could proceed forward in this next year and in the next five years, offer up some examples. And if you all are supportive of that, please chime in and say what you are supportive of. But one way that I've recognized throughout this year, working with everyone, although many of you are leaders in your respective communities, I think with the Commission and what our, our office can do and help facilitate better is not just having these meetings here, but going out into, into the community and providing listening sessions. When they, in that first phase, they did that, but they also had like, I think they had like a seven-person team or something working on it because it was outsourced. And then recognizing this year, it will be only the diversity and equity team working consistently with the Commission, that we can make some goals towards that. So what I proposed, or what we were thinking of doing is if there would be an annual community, two R U P hosted community listening sessions.
Like a town hall?
Yeah, town hall or even focus groups, maybe one large one and a smaller one, so that you can sit in and listen to what community folks are saying. And, and these could, I think it would be great if the, it would be similar to what you all did before where it was more of you all identifying spaces and places for, for the rest, for the city to engage in those types of conversations.
I believe we had something like that last year where we had a platform, I think, I think it was where people were calling in and speaking on different topics about police engagement and stuff. I can't remember, Steve, do you remember that platform we had? I think it was set up by the group that we had.
Yeah, the contracted group.
Yeah, do you remember who they were then?
I can't remember, when I came in, they were already, I just read their records, yeah.
They had, one of those members had set up a platform for the public to call in and engage. I wouldn't mind doing that again.
Okay.
But I would, I would like that in public, like an in-person kind of.
Yeah, because that was the other thing that was so unique about how this Commission was set up and that I think can be broadened, also taking whatever you learned from that, was you did this all through the pandemic, right? So none of you actually met in person until more recently. Oh, okay, so those, yeah, let's, I think there, that's a possibility. You can do it via, an electronic platform.
And we can still do it hybrid where people, people can get online or call in or whatever. But I think personal engagement is better.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like, I like what you're saying, Steve. I think, I think that was set up by Larry Schooler. It was.
It was, was the facilitator.
Yes.
That's, that's what it was called, the facilitator.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, Larry School.
And I think they gave an overview of that process in the appendices of the phase one report. So we have those records. And I like that idea, maybe for a broad, but I also appreciate what you're saying, Steve, about the importance of those ongoing smaller in-person. Maybe, I know we don't have a quorum, but my idea is, is maybe a little bit of both so we can get that, like, like, like harness the power of the media in Salt Lake City. I think it was related to S L C T V and everything else. And then we can also go to smaller groups. And in that way, we can dig a little deeper into the community to get more information and feedback. So it's not just, well, we asked people to show up and they didn't and well, but we continue to dig deeper to get that information so we can improve our police department. I, I think that balanced approach is a good way to go.
I also think one thing, because there are so many leaders of different community organizations, one of the suggestions could be too, to get to that granular level is for whoever is in, for like Michelle to go out into these different meetings that are held and, and also we can organize around that if Commissioners are willing to open up those spaces for the city to come in and have discussions. Since it's, I am of the mind that you should organize an event if other people are already congregating and if we can show up and be supportive in a type of, in some type of way. But I'm also, if people are willing to invite, for whatever reason, I know that people have hesitancy with police and, and any government, but opening that up as well so that there are going to be multiple touchpoints to your community.
I like that. But I, I also like the idea of S L P E putting on something and inviting civilians and people to engage.
Yeah, and so that goes to our next, one of the next suggestions, that's perfect, see where you trained, is that S L C P D already hosts, or they're, they're starting to ramp, just like Lieutenant Clough said. So they're, if we can schedule Commissioners to attend or if they have people in your own community that we can start to push out and support these, the meetings that S L C P D holds monthly. So they, the, the communities they currently serve are Latino Coalition, Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Community Group, Refugee Group. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong Lieutenant Clough, that Detective Hadlock wanted to organize one for a black community group as well.
Nope, that's correct. She's still working on it, she's been out of town this week though, but.
Yeah, so if we, once, and, and we've been talking with Detective Hadlock too, she's open to share, she will be open to share when those meetings happen and then for us to rotate and, and start attending those. So I think it's exactly what you're seeing and that's our, that there's a foundation for that to happen.
Yeah, I'd love to collaborate with, get her in collaboration with the Utah Black Chamber to see, you know, if she'd be interested in collaborating her most things.
Oh, I think, I think she would. So we'll, we'll put you in touch with Detective Hadlock.
So I, I really like the idea of piggybacking on the work that is already doing. And as retired law enforcement myself, I, I also want to caution that it's important for us to operate independently to get to those folks that maybe don't feel comfortable speaking directly to law enforcement. I think it's our goal as a Commission to create that bridge where everyone feels comfortable around law enforcement. But I don't think that's currently the case. And so the more access points we can get to hear the community's perspective is important. And I, so I really like this layered approach, working with the department, working with mass media, and also working with additional opportunities to engage the community on smaller scale. And I think we can get a more, a more broad message from the community about their expectations about the department.
Perfect. Yeah, I think that that's the, that that would be the goal too. So, and, and just like the ordinance said, that you all are kind of working out is that you come to these meetings so you are in some ways interpreting for the rest of us as the government and then community folks. So the other piece to this that is, could be a suggestion would be to partner, some of the issues that have come through our office actually have been intersectional in terms of race and disability. And so one of the other things that was, that could be suggested if you are interested, and I've talked to Nicole as well about this, or the Chair and my chair about this, of how some of the, the folks that are, who have neurodiverse needs, who are on the spectrum, as well as have mental health. We, the Commission has addressed some of those issues with the phase one, but having a subcommittee or to partner with the Accessibility and Disability Commission that they, we recently established here in Salt Lake City to address some of these issues and give recommendations to the Mayor and City Council and S L C P D. Is that something that you all would be interested as well looking at?
Would my take a moment?
Moana, were you discussing that intersection between the Disability Law Center and the work that we're doing on this Commission?
Not just the, the Accessibility and Accessibility and Disability Commission here at Salt Lake City. So that intersection with, with S L C P D of, of some of the sensory and neurodiverse needs of the community. And I think it's because we've had community members come to us, not necessarily only about S L C P D, but I think that that has just another layer for the Commission to, to look at.
Yeah, I totally agree. So we've started to scratch the surface on our interest in mental health. But there's, there's lots of other accessibility with the department that can be examined. And I think that would be a valuable relationship.
Okay, and I, and I think those are like the main suggestions that I have in terms of community facing with those things. And since I think we're all somewhat on the same, so what I'm going to do as we have all this is really distill the information and the feedback you all give so that I can have it in a, in a timeline for, to share with the Mayor in November. But I will definitely share it with you all before making it public. As well as, one thing I wanted to go over before you left, Steve, I think you're about to head out, is this one piece of what the ordinance says. And I think that this may be something of interest in the next five years that you all would like to evaluate. And I just don't think that we've scratched the surface of this. And I want to make sure that it is addressed because it's, it's in the ordinance within the five-year plan. So in here, it says, review the current structure of the civilian review board, evaluate national models and make recommendations to the Mayor and City Council on how to increase its effectiveness. So like every other part of this, you all have touched on with a lot of the feedback you've given. I just don't think that this one has yet to be, to be reviewed. So what are all your thoughts on this, those that are here?
Well, I, I personally think that review board is a critical connection between the community and the department. And I wonder if we, so for sure, we should address it because it's in ordinance, right?
Yes.
I think one way to go about that is to invite, I can't remember the facilitator for that review board's name right off the top of my head, but I wonder if we should invite him back, discuss their process and where he feels they are on that national stage. And then maybe we could do a little, little research on our own to, to look for that. And maybe even ask for some advice from the City Attorney because that, that review, it has limitations by state statute, as I understand. And maybe we should get a better handle on what the intent of that board is and what the legal requirements are and, and what the national standard is. And then give a more educated response to that. But I, I think that's a great catch, Moana, that that's in the ordinance. And that we should definitely put it on our agenda.
I agree.
Lieutenant, can you, can you think of his name? Why can't I think of his name? The FBI agent, it's kind of famous around here.
So he retired. Yeah, his replacement is Tanya Richards. She's phenomenal, she comes from Atlanta, she has background in civilian review board. Um, she's phenomenal, she comes from Atlanta, she has background in uh, civilian review board investigation. Um, so she'd be great to reach out to, you can also reach out to Christie Marcy, she facilitates for the CRB. Um, and if you need Moana, I can get you both their contact information.
Okay, and I think too, this is looking forward for twenty twenty-three as well, um, so that will be part of the five-year priorities list.
When I think.
Oh, go ahead.
Moana, I'm really sorry, I think. The timing's ideal if there's been a change in that leadership, uh, form of leadership, to get an idea uh, from the. Facilitator, um, I think that'd be really healthy for this board.
Okay, so we can start the ball rolling if you could send that to me, um, Lieutenant Clough.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Um, the other piece to this that I will be putting is that uh, together, I think it's part of the, the challenge, it's, it's like. Trying to, what I've realized over this past year is like, it's such a huge undertaking, and trying to take piece by piece. Uh, and I do think that there's a lot of things that was addressed in that Phase One. But also laying it out within the next five years to see how certain things will take. A year or two years in order to complete, so. I commend SLCPD for quickly addressing so many issues, um. And then still providing us the ones that they, they have ongoing or in progress. Uh, and of course, I'll send this out so we have this, I'm going to categorize these things that have already happened. And give you some kind of um. Just what possible timeline of when that could be um. Completed, as well as like some things that we need to work on within the next, next year, so it can be completed by twenty twenty-four, for instance. The MOU and putting more energy into that and understanding that everybody has lives and this is a voluntary, uh, volunteer board. Um, saying, okay, let's focus this year on the passing of the MOU in twenty twenty-three and whatever folks need to, and I can do outreach for that. That that can happen, as well as a group that is willing to go to the committee meetings and hear what's happening, um, or taking a pulse on what the day-to-day, um. Um, what folks are saying about the interactions of the government and SLCPD um, within the community, so. I think maybe the next step for me, as I'm looking at time is running out, is I can provide all this, I'll do some. I'll send it out to the whole commission, but then I'm going to, whoever wants to be a part of this, they can self-select. Um, and give me direct feedback for the commission in the next five years, or send me through email if you don't have time to meet with the person. But I'll be doing outreach as well, so if you hear a call from me, that's because I'm going to bother you to get some more detailed information. Um, or direct feedback, so yeah. Anybody have any questions on that, on what I was?
I, I love the idea of what you said about having a group that could directly engage with some of the uh, upcoming events. Just to get the pulse.
Yeah.
And uh, is there a way you can put together that information and send it out, like a push notice before, and so we can select which. Like core members or party members could select which events they might want to take part in?
I think we can do that for the SLCPD, um. When they give us the meetings and I can send out like, here are meetings, I think that would be helpful too, if we can send out that and then. Whoever has the availability at that time would like to participate, and what's interesting is like, for instance, Commissioner Saltini already attends like the Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander. SLCPD community meeting, so like, some people are already engaged in that, I think it's just plugging them, like having, making sure we are close on. And have people report out in the, these meetings, some of the, um, some of the things they're learning. Or like, I know you're really engaged because you're a leader in your own community, um, we have those events already with DEI. That maybe like sharing that more frequently with the commission might be something that. Is more effective or helps, so if, if that would benefit.
Yeah.
You think that would be beneficial, then we can look at, into how, how to do that too.
Okay.
Uh, yes, I'm on a couple of thoughts, I, I really like what, what Steve is asking for, for more uh, access to those meetings and more opportunities to attend, and. Um, I appreciate uh, as you just articulated, that there are those opportunities and to give us as much notice as possible. Um, I know there have been a few events. In the past that some of them were short notice, that, that a few of us commissioners were able to get to, and I think it's nice to be able to be present. Uh, as a commission, um, the more noticed, the more likely that is. Um, the, the next thing is I, I, I appreciate you taking the leadership. Set up a five-year plan, because. Uh, events can happen and then we're responding to events, and then we're, we're kind of stuck in an area where, where. We're going from one event to the next, but without having that foundation about making long-term change. And it's important that we're present in the short run, but really like having a strategy. Um, for that long run, and I appreciate you taking the leadership on that. And, and, and then really, I, I would be more than willing to work with you one-on-one, uh, accepting that invitation. Um, as other commissioners will too, as they're available, but I. I think this is a very important part of the future of this commission. Is to have this ongoing strategy. Um, and then my final thought, I know I talk a lot, but my final thought. Uh, and uh, Verona and Samantha and Steve, I hope, I hope you agree with me. Um, we've been at this a couple of years, and we've done some really good things already. And we still have things in the upper coming up, and I really appreciate the city and the police department. Uh, focusing on those things to bring these things into reality. So some of the things that we suggested are still in progress, and it takes a while for them to happen, and it'll take even longer perhaps until we see more results. But I think they're really important, and I think we hit some important things early on. So I appreciate that those on, ongoing list is a part of our ongoing timeline, and I think that's important to acknowledge, so. Uh, anyway, thanks commissioners, thanks Moana, um, I could jump off the call, uh, but I really like the direction.
Thanks Steve. All right. I think, um, yeah, so I'm going to start reaching out, whoever is interested, already Tanya and Nicole, of course. I meet with them regularly, we'll be discussing more in depth, we've already had some conversations, and they actually helped with. I don't want to make it seem like it was just me, but um, these suggestions when we had our chair and vice-chair meeting. Uh, for out, for out-facing meetings, so um, whoever's interested, let me know, if not, I'm just going to cold call you. And you can also give, uh, we'll connect you with uh, with Detective Hadlock too, because I think that that's really important. To have those specific meetings, all right.
You said that she was forming um. A black engagement group.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because they've already formed the other three, which kind of organically happened, each one of them when they were responding to. Uh, specific events, and then um, yeah, I think that that was, that's important. And they, the chief actually and some community members reached out and wanted to start that, so. If you can connect with her, I think that would be awesome.
Yeah, yeah, send me in contact.
Yeah, we'll connect you, thank you so much for offering. And then we see Jason's here, thank you so much for, yeah, thanks so much for your time and for uh, your flexibility. We're just gonna have the, so annually we have to have open um, public uh, open public meetings act, an epic training. So you get to do that this year, Jason, and thank you for, for coming in.
I'm happy to do it, thanks, I appreciate the chance to be here with all of you. Um, the, the training, as we go ahead and do, it's maybe something that all or most of you have done before, but please feel free to ask questions if things come up as we go through it. But as far as the process goes, really what we have is we have a, a statutory or legislative duty. To make sure that the public's business is conducted with public can see it and, and can participate in the process as it goes forward. So there's a legislative requirement with our public meetings to be open in public unless there are certain reasons. Why they wouldn't fit within that, that uh, criteria, that framework. There's an annual training requirement, so that's what we're doing here today, is making sure that you have an opportunity for that training. As far as a meeting goes, the meeting is a, essentially constitutes a convening of the public body where there's a quorum present. For a specific uh, purpose of, of discussing, voting on, or otherwise addressing the public's business. And so if we're operating in that type of a setting, that would be considered a meeting. Now, meeting doesn't include just a chance or a social gathering where you're not discussing public business, things of that nature. And the convening of the meetings, when is the calling to, uh, together of the public body. By a person that is authorized to do so for the express purpose of discussing or acting upon a subject over which the public body has jurisdiction and advisory power. So in this type of a setting, certainly we're in a meeting, if it's more of just a, a social environment where you're not discussing the public's business. Or the business that applies to this particular committee, then, then you wouldn't need a meeting type scenario. And the quorum typically is a, it's the simple majority of the membership of the public body, unless there's a different definition applied. So the, the general rule is that all the meetings need to be open to the public unless there's a proper reason for closing pursuant to the Open and Public Meetings Act. Uh, a meeting that's open to the public would include also a workshop or an executive session of the public body. Where a, where a quorum of uh, of the membership is uh, present, so that would be included as well, oh, how are you?
Very good.
Good, thank you. And uh, it's particularly important that the uh, public meeting or, or the, the public's business be, include the information that you face. With regard to decision-making, where we're, we're learning about or addressing the, the topics of consideration. And then particularly the final action of the decision needs to be issued in the public meetings, so the public needs to actually be able to. Learn what the final decision is, how that was reached. Uh, with regard to the notices of a public meeting, typically the notice of the public meeting needs to be given at least twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting itself. It needs to include the agenda, the date, time, and place of the meeting. And. Notice needs to be posted at the principal office of the committee and on Utah Public Notice website. Um, and provided either to a newspaper of general circulation or to a local media correspondent. Now, we also have, particularly over the last several years, emergency meetings have up, come up on occasion, uh, it's been a crazy several years. But with respect to emergency meetings, we're just trying to get the best notice practice, we're trying to reach out. And make sure that we have an, an opportunity to uh, get the meeting notice and provide some information as to the substance of what will be discussed, but the notice requirements. Are relaxed if we're dealing with an emergency meeting. But with regard to the agenda, it's important that uh, the topics that are going to be discussed are included in the agenda. So each topic should be listed under an agenda item, and if a topic isn't listed on an agenda item, then we can't take action on that item. Unless uh, it's listed and included in the advanced public notice. Now again, if it's an emergency meeting, we do the best we can, but those, those restrictions are relaxed somewhat there. Uh, also, there could be some situations where a topic may be raised by a member of the public that's not included on the agenda. Then the chair has discretion as to whether or not there can be discussion on that topic. But no votes can be taken with regard to that topic until there's been an opportunity to uh, notice it up properly on the agenda for a future meeting. So with regard to the meeting minutes and recordings, well, I'm gonna jump for a moment, I'm gonna go to closed meetings first, talk a little bit about closed meetings. So we do have circumstances in which meetings can be closed, and the Open and Public Meetings Act is very specific as to what those are. The types of topics which would uh, impact or could impact discussions in, in front of this particular committee. Would include discussion of the character of professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual. Uh, strategy sessions to discuss pending or recently imminent litigation. Strategy sessions to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property. Uh, discussion regarding employment of security personnel, devices, or systems. And also you can receive a legal counsel advice, so if you ever need to ask a, your attorney about. Particular items, you can close the meeting for those purposes as well. Uh, the process for closing the meeting is, is laid out pretty, pretty explicitly in the code. It requires first that a quorum needs to be present in the public meeting, there's the required notice of the meeting needs to be given. And then a, and a vote needs to be taken with respect to closing the meeting. Two-thirds of, at least two-thirds of the members present need to vote to close the meeting. And if they do so, you need to announce during the meeting and also entering to the minutes. The reasons for holding the closed meeting and the location where the closed meeting will be held. Uh, in addition, you also need to vote by name of each member of the public body and whether they voted for or against uh, the motion to hold the closed meeting. So, and with respect to closed meetings, uh, the, and regard to the record of the closed meetings, here for just a moment. Uh, typically, with regard to a closed meeting, I, you just need to, sorry, I've got way too many papers up here. But with regard to that. Yeah, the record, it's, for a closed meeting, you keep a. Typically you would keep a, sorry, it's. A list of the, the recording of the closed meeting. And you may keep detailed written minutes of the meeting, but you don't necessarily need to do so, so the written, the uh, the recording is sufficient in those purposes. Now with regard to, did you say you didn't have to keep minutes for the closed, closed meeting? You may keep written minutes, but you don't need to, but you do need to keep a, a recording of the closed meeting, so you've got that, that available.
Is that for both open and closed meetings?
Uh, for open and closed, you need to keep both the written minutes and you need to keep the recording as well. Uh, there is one, I'm sorry, go ahead, yes.
Recording is a problematic enough?
A recording alone is not good enough for an open meeting.
For opening.
Uh, there is a circumstance where if you are in a, a, essentially a traveling meeting where you are, are moving around or things of that nature. Then uh, you don't need to keep the recording, but with that, you need to, uh, you can't take any votes that aren't part of the recording, you still need to have the written minutes present and available for it. Even if you got a quorum. Even if you have a quorum, you still need to keep the, the written minutes, yes. But you, I thought you said you couldn't vote, uh, you can't, if you were traveling, you can't vote, so if you were. Uh, for instance, on a different community that I, I serve on, we'll go out and tour the grounds to see what's, what's going on. And it's not very feasible to, to report the meeting in that particular instance, because everyone's face so far, and we don't have a very good recording device for it. So in those instances, we won't keep a recording, but we're not able to, to make any votes or decisions from around. So, and, okay, thank you, and. No, I was, I was just, when we were out on a tour, and we, we were able to, we were able to record, but. It was like, we were all there, why wouldn't we be able to record, I mean, why wouldn't we be able to vote? Yeah, I believe if you are, if you are able to record and you can handle the written minutes, then I believe you can, in that instance. It's moving. Correct, yes, but if you don't have the recording, then you're not allowed.
Okay.
Okay, now, good, okay. Yeah, now, thank you for, for raising those questions, it's a lot that goes into it. Um, but with regard to uh, another important thing is that no vote can be taken in a closed meeting, other than the vote in the closed portion of the meeting. So whatever discussion happens inside the closed meeting, it can happen there, but the final vote is to taking any actual action other than closing that closed meeting, or moving out of that closed meeting. Would need to be done in an open meeting, so there's essentially no secret votes, there's substance. Okay. Um. And then with regard to the minutes in an open meeting, uh, the written minutes of the open meeting will include the date, the time, and place of the meeting. The names of all the members who are present and absent, the substance of the matters that are proposed, discussed, or decided by the public. the substance of the matters that are proposed, discussed, or decided by the public body. This can include a summary of the comments made by members of the public body. And also the name of every person who's not a member of the committee itself, but who provides comment or testimony or evidence. They're also, their names are recorded in the minutes, and a brief summary or the substance of what they talked about would also be included. Another thing that also I'd like to point out is, if there's any information that you feel should be in the minutes, you can specifically request it being included and just make sure that that makes the minutes as well. So that's a way that you can make sure that information that you believe is pertinent and important can make it into the written record.
Ask commissioners, they can ask them, okay?
Yes, yes. Yeah, and so then, with regard to, we've talked about closed meetings. Electronic meetings have changed a little bit in the last little while, as you can tell right now, we're obviously getting very comfortable with electronic meetings and the processes by which we use that. Now, the state code indicates that you can't hold an electronic meeting unless you've got a resolution, a rule, or an ordinance that governs the use of the electronic meetings. We have those in place, and so we can hold electronic meetings, such as what we're doing right now. With respect to that, typically, for an electronic meeting, we need an anchor location, and that's a physical location where the public can come and participate in any part of the meeting. We also typically, we will have a link or an electronic means of also participating in the meeting and making that available and something that can be used. We need to provide notice as to the fact that we're going to be doing an electronic meeting and provide informations particularly to the committee members, as to how they can connect to that meeting, and also we provide information to the public at large. There are a few instances in which the anchor location portion of the requirement can be eliminated or waived by the chair. We've encountered those instances where the chair determines that it's simply, there's a risk of public safety or health that would be occasioned by holding an in-person meeting or having an anchor location where people are meeting, we saw that a lot earlier during the pandemic, where we just did meetings entirely electronically because it was dangerous to meet in person. So we've got that particular scenario, if the chair does make that determination, they should indicate that they have found that there's a public health or safety risk and outline specifically the conditions or the the facts that led to their conclusion with respect to those issues. We also want to make sure that we do have available a link or an opportunity that the public can use to participate in a meeting that doesn't have an anchor location. So if there's a determination that we're going to not have an anchor location, we should make sure that the public has an opportunity to participate and has notices to exactly how they can participate and be part of that. With respect to disruption of the meetings, the Act doesn't prohibit the removal of any person from a meeting if they willfully disrupt a meeting to the extent that orderly conduct is seriously compromised. That's not something that happens often, but in, over the years, we have seen some instances where that has been the case, or there has been the occasional interruption that's disorderly to the extent where someone can be removed. With regard to the consequences of violating the Open Meetings Law, typically, what happens is if an action is taken, it's a violation of the Open and Public Meetings Law, then that action can be voided through a timely or that action or legal action filed. It usually needs to be within 90 days, now, just essentially avoid the action if the court were to find that the Open and Public Meetings Law was violated. There's also a commissioner or a committee member who knowingly or intentionally violates the Open and Public Meetings Law Act can be held liable for a class being stood in there. So we obviously encourage you all to avoid knowingly and intentionally violating the Open and Public Meetings Law as we go through the process. I'd also just give a, just a little bit of a caution with regard to text messages. It's still kind of a developing area of the law, but there have been grandma requests and other things where individuals have sought text messages that committee members or public officials have sent from one public official to another during an open public meeting. And so if you're sending texts or things of that nature, recognize there's at least a possibility that those could be public records that would be disposable under a grandma request.
Did you say that they were requesting the text from the time span during the meeting?
Yes, that's my understanding, is there'd be instances where someone in the audience would observe one official texting and see reaction or something else by someone else up there. And then there'd be a grandma request afterwards seeking those records.
But they can't seek records before or after that meeting?
Anything that is not arguably a public record wouldn't be subject to grandma, it wouldn't qualify as a public record, it would be subject to it, so if you're texting or a family member about a riot or anything else before or after, that wouldn't fall under any type of a public record, it wouldn't be subject to a grandma request. It's simply something that could be considered official public business that would qualify.
I have a question. Because I think there's like a rule against doing the messages, because they don't get recorded on the, the symbol for the webex. So is it like a similar situation with the text messages?
I think it would be similar.
Because it's during a public meeting where it's like other communications out back then is considered.
Yes, I think it's arguably, it could be seen as an attempt to get around the open and public meetings. And that's something that, it's new enough technology-wise, that it's still an area that's time to develop. But there are, there have been requests, and that's working its way through the process. And there's a good likelihood that those types of messages could potentially be found to be something the public could receive under grandma.
Yeah, and we usually just involve that feature unless it's a bar level, can you give me the link? So we don't encourage it, that's what the bar said as well as said to do.
That makes sense, because that avoids any temptation or possibility of problems. I believe that's everything I've got, it's official, I was digging around through my papers for a few minutes, if there's anything, if you have any other questions or if anything wasn't clear, feel free to ask.
Bring a copy of that for us?
Um, I feel, in coffee. It's pretty well marked up, but I'd be happy to either provide multiple copies to one, if that works best.
That'd be great.
I can send them via email as well if you have copies, you wanted to send it in.
That would be great, yeah, I can go ahead and just do that.
Yeah. I'm surprised they don't have you sign off on acknowledgement, that you read all that.
You run through it, there is an online version of the training, for anyone that's interested, you can take a look on the state office's website if you want information.
Can you send me that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Okay, Jason.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Can you send me that weekend mat for those who are able to be here?
Yeah, I'd be happy to send that as well, so that comes from the state, since they put together the legislative stuff, they've got the responsibility.
Yeah, definitely want a copy of that.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate the chance to talk to you, and nice to meet you all, it's a really wonderful meeting here. Jason Oldberg, nice to meet you all.
Yeah, and just to let you know that Jason will now be taking care of the commission meetings. Hannah had previously been our attorney, quick person, so they've kind of done some shuffle. I think you used to do it a few years back though, right?
I've been here at all.
You've been the commission.
At the very beginning.
I think very quickly, at the beginning, yeah.
Yeah.
Passed around a few different processes and projects.
I know you found yourself full circle.
It's a fun spot, it's good, appreciate the chance to be here.
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Just want to note that Vice Chair Tanya Hawkins entered the meeting, and also Commissioner Lacy Asati is also on the line. Commissioner Lacy Asati. And Commissioner Samantha. All right, our next item on the agenda is the subcommittee updates. I think for the days you all, as I'm compiling this five-year report, and I'm going to conference and talk with the chair and vice-chair. We, I'll do a final meeting for the policy and practice group for this month. And then, as I'm trying to gather information to finish the annual report, we will have those on a need-to basis. So I can finish up the five-year report, and as I said before, these last few months, I'm trying to make sure that we have a good foundation for the next 2023, as well as going into the next few years, so I don't have any specific updates from those subcommittee meetings. And I'll have more information at our next meeting in October.
I like that, need-to basis.
Yeah.
Sorry, maybe, need-to, need-to basis.
Okay, I know. And I think with the five-year plan and looking at that, that will shift the new, the subcommittees and how often we need to meet with them, by what is the focus of that year. And that's a learning I've had, so thank you all for being part of this with me, because I had all of these meetings and had great aspirations, but also understanding that you, meeting where you all are at, many of you have multiple and your own jobs, of course, you have lives, but in terms of community, you are all in multiple spaces. So thank you for even participating and being here, and I will try to get back all that information and like consolidate and distill all the that it's like something that you can quickly look over in a couple of weeks. So, yes. Our next item, we don't need a closed session meeting, so yeah, I think that that's the last one, did anybody else have any input or wanted to bring up any items to add, or had any thoughts for our five-year plan that they had while we were talking about Open and Public Meetings Act?
Moana, I just want to add, you know, as far as I think for our community, getting more of that targeted outreach to hear from our community. Two upcoming conferences that I think would be great to attend, one of them's the Restoring Indigenous Winds, and the other is the Indian Child Welfare Act Conference.
What was that last one?
The Indian Child Welfare Act Conference.
Okay. And those are coming up in the next month or so?
Yes, in the next couple of months.
Okay, and I know that Native American History Month also is in November, so there'll be a lot of protests coming up too, okay. I will note that, and exactly what you're saying, so we're gonna, I'll be reaching out, especially for that community piece, to have more if you all are open to it. Those of you that are in those organizations, that we can start connecting and listening to community where they're at, instead of only I think, yeah, that multi-layer approach.
Right, and I agree with Commissioner, what he, Commissioner Anjubharen, what he shared earlier as far as you know, serving as that liaison, because our community is hesitant in speaking with ourselves frankly, so I am willing to participate if I can help in that way.
Oh, yes, and just to be clear, I think it will be, whatever you all say is the participation level, so if it's just a member of the staff, like Michelle, or Marie, or I, that you're inviting, then we'll only bring that person. So if they are still not comfortable and don't want to bring the whole PD in uniform, I think that the listening part is what we care for right now, so that we can get the information. So, thank you, thank you for offering us that help as well. All right, anybody else have any other commitments? Feel free to text me or email me, and then I can send out as well to the larger group. We, at some point, had enough people, and then people have come in and out, so we don't have quorum at this very moment. So we don't even need, we can conclude the meeting without having that actually taken, so thank you all for participating, and we will meet next month. Please look out, I will do some outreach in the next couple of weeks, so that I can make sure I capture everyone's choices for that five-year priorities. Thank you for attending and for all your help, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, bye.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.